I'd like to call this meeting of the Bird Council of Mechanicsburg for September 21st, 2021 to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance following a minute's time. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation united in the Constitution. Thank you. All calls.
President Rivers.
Yes.
Vice President Miller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Iguodala. Councilwoman Nathan A.
Yes.
Councilwoman Booker.
Yes.
Councilman Hellman.
Yes.
Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
Doors that are closed.
Yes.
And Mayor Boe. He is not here. Keith Myers.
Yes.
Keith Ness.
Yes.
Ian Puardo.
Yes.
Manager of the Thursday.
Yes.
Assistant Manager Boy. Ian Boy.
Thank you. I see we have several guests this evening, so we'll begin with Mr. Van Kirk. He is standing in for two hours in the evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry to disappoint those who are looking forward to seeing Mrs. Oden, but my name is Jim Van Kirk and I'm here representing Simpson Library. First and foremost, I want to thank Bird Council administration for your continued support of the library. As you know, we need all the help to do that. The library is celebrating its 60th anniversary, which I believe you all have received a flower in your blue packet. And we're keeping the celebration kind of low-key due to COVID, but it is a milestone for a library in our community. And I'm going to beat the mayor to a trivia question. What was the address of the first library in Mechanicsburg?
Across the street from my house.
Hmm?
It's across the street from my house.
Which is?
Oh, hold on. 39?
No.
No.
Are you thinking of the brother?
The brother home, yes.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
That was not number one.
There was another house on Simpson, wasn't there?
That is correct.
We were on that little further street on.
26 West Simpson Street. It was in a house of 26 West Simpson Street. Nobody gets surprised. It wasn't one anyhow.
Just to hear the story.
The library is continuing to come back after the COVID. Needless to say, usage of ebooks is up 51% and audiobooks 19% over 2019. Our e-person numbers are coming back to normal and we're starting to have more and more e-house programs that everyone was familiar with. During the COVID shutdown, however, we were able to get some things accomplished. We put in LED lighting throughout the library, which hopefully will save on our electric bills. And we also, Ken White, this is Ken White, installed the new electronic checkout system, which required putting little tags in every book, all 107,000 of them. And we did have people coming in the library when it was closed and put those tags in. And I don't know if you've ever seen that, but when they check books in, they can take a whole stack of books, put them on a little, looks like a scale, checks them all at one time, instead of doing it one at a time. Finally, the last thing I had to say is the library action, online action is currently underway and bidding continues until Sunday night, December 26th, at 9:00 AM. Bird or library website or Facebook page to get the link to bid. And I encourage you all to, all I can say is good luck, because I've been outbid on everything I've bid on. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lord, thank you.
Okay, Keith Ness.
And Ian P. Little. They're going to tag team this one, I believe.
So, good evening, members of council. I'm excited about tonight. This is something that we don't have the opportunity to ever let it do, but at the same time, it's a way of joy, it's a way of thankfulness, and it's also a way of recognition. So, first off, I'd like to start by recognizing some of the special guests. Penn State Health, the other one, I'd like to recognize, uh, Brian Nurse, could you please stand? He's the manager of operations at Penn State Health. Uh, Kevin Dotbyus, he's assistant chief of EMX of Operations, head of asset. Also, Leshaw Fire Fire, Chief Tim Mahone, could you please stand? And also, I'd like to, Becky Mertes, could you please stand, Becky? So Becky, Becky has done just a sensational job. She's fascinated with what happened in Mechanicsburg and August 3rd. And we've had so much discussion over it, and she really just loves the story and we love all the great work that you've done, so thank you. And we also have another special guest tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like you to introduce Ronald Trotzler. Ronald Trotzler is known as Fire Victim until we met him. Ronald, could you still please come on? He was a fire victim and since then, two weeks in the hospital, and all the building was, all the responders, he's with us today. So, we have to say it's something wrong.
Just walk up to him, please. What a joy.
Firstly, I just want to thank, thank them very much for everything, because I know they put their own lives in danger to help myself and everyone in this community and everyone. And it's just a blessing and pleasure, really, for everything that they have done and all, and what they do for us. And I just, in many ways, I very well thank them for just giving that extra life and all.
Okay. I'd also like to recognize the rest of the Mechanicsburg burn to the fire department. Uh, it takes a lot of pieces of the puzzle, not all of them here. We also have how many members are out protecting the fire at this time and the mutual aid, uh, the ring station? And we were being screened by, we were, yeah, so, thank you, thank you men and women out at the firehouse, we're in standby. So just sit here, brief rundown, and who all came to the fire? And I've just learned the properties, we have 15 other properties. Navy Support Activities, Navy, I'm not saying the faster, New Kingston Fire Company, Hampton Township Fire Company, Leshaw Fire Fire, Silver Spring Fire Company, Upper Arm Fire Company, Non-Rail Fire Company, Camp Hill Fire Department, Lower Arm Township Fire Department, New Company and Army Viper, which was also called as a dirt team that come to help or actually protect the firefighters. Penn State, I find many folks from the Penn State team, and they're in standby, while everybody was doing their work. We have Shuns Fire Company, Non-Hallfire Company, and the fire fighting rescue was in stations, none of the other calls. So at this time, just for everybody, for us to get into the mood, I will tell you, but Roger, go ahead, I'm going, I'm going to show a quick clip of a dispatch, just so that it kind of brings you to where it happened that day.
I'm about at the end of my range.
Jonathan, December 26th, 23, 24, outside of 29, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, 3, 2, 2, 2, 2, 29, 23, that's the 29, 30, red, 30, 30. Jonathan, December 26th, 23, 24, outside of 29, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 2, 2, 2, 29, 23, that's the 29, 30, red, 30, 30.
Air Force, 29, that gave me a warning call, I just got a call. I had to try to be a small report. Air Force, 23.
23.
She didn't close the fire. More location, uh, two more stores, two blocks, approximately 35, 70. Heavy smoke coming from the rear. Make sure to lock it from the rear side.
Okay. So, what happens after then? So this is where I'd like to, um, bring up, did the following individuals come up in rotation, maybe standing here over, in this room? Dalton Peters. Lynn Faribault. Jason Albert. Thomas Bender. James Reese. Chris Bickler. Breanna Miller. James Archer. Savannah Talis. Alex Burden. Brian Rusty. Elizabeth Ness. Jason Frank. Michael Schoner. Tiana. Jimenez. Ronald Dallinger. I understand three of these individuals from Leshaw Fire and we will return. Justin Everly. Justin, do you make it?
Yes.
Jonathan Fisher. Terry Player. Zachary Lexit. And Dr. Richard Lowery. In talking, in talking with Ryan Trotzler afterwards, it was a boy, he was hospitalized of two weeks. This journey, um, he was lost from the Holy Spirit at that time, uh, they gave him a emergency care, and then somehow, within that time, when he was flown to Allentown and Burn Center. He had a few weeks' stay to date, two weeks for his recovery. Several days into it, I was able to talk to him. It was hard to talk to him because there's so much smoke inhalation and everything else in it, but it was certainly a joy. And we talked about the experience. We talked about how he remembers very little. The fire happened, the alarm had sounded, makes him remember he goes up to the second floor and falls. He doesn't even remember falling. Then he wakes up a couple days later in the hospital. So, with that, we talked about, how did that happen? And I told him, and he explained to me also, we both agree with both, um, all the stories had to run out. And tonight, we have 17 stars. And what I would like to do is explain to you how those 17 stars lined up. Because with that being said, I have a quote that I would like to read. "What is the use of living if it be not described for noble causes? And to make this narrow world a better place, the greater we live in it, than we are all gone." Winston Churchill. So, as long as I've been a chief officer in the fire department, this picture has always been in my office as a reminder of what we do, why we do it. Uh, it's tired, it's old, but it shows. New York City Fire Force, 2-9 Company, Lieutenant Two, we're bringing a backup air into a child for a rescue. This comparison of Winston Churchill's and the graphic picture that I have here, let me help you with that, and let's demonstrate the path that was followed, the Knottville Stars and the Lord Mechanicsburg and August 3rd. Did you maybe stop words, I was definitely. Okay. So just to help counsel, bear with me. You heard the audio of the call, the goal, the stairs touch, everybody's running about. Dalton Peters. Dalton Peters is the first vehicle on the scene. He's at the hill station, the fire's a block in the north of the way. He notices right away, he's sitting in the back, he sees that the fire is, and he brings the tow truck down as first in. And it's imperative that the tow truck tries to get their force, because they have those big outriggers and it takes such a platform to set it up to get to the roof. This one I also identified, but there's a smoke cone. Everybody knows it's a broken event. Lieutenant, uh, I mean, Captain Lynn Faribault. He's also at Station Two. It's training night. How did all the stories line up? Training doesn't start until seven. 6:30, they do the rig trucks. The quote comes in prior to that. So Lynn's one of the guys that's fortunate, we have the response at that time of a crew staff. So Lynn's on the sky, he comes right down the street. Jason Albert, Jason Albert's on the squad. Jason was instrumental in, as soon as we get there, he pulls the line off, the one hose line. At that time, the fire's developed, the whole way to the back is voiding, it's up and over the roof. Jason was instrumental in knocking down already extenuated fire, which really was a huge safeguard for the folks that were inside, trying to search for the fire victim. Safety officer, Tom Bender. Same thing. He was assisting him at the time. He was throwing hoes around and making sure there was no kinks, and he was helping Jason on the line. First thing's squad. James Reese, driver of Rescue 29. Another, he's at Station Two, he brings a second piece of apparatus, he declares he comes down, now we've got to think about water supply. Got to get water to that first aid engine that Lynn brought. All good.
Thank you, Jim.
Chris Bickler, Chief Bickler. He's at Station One with Breanna Miller. He brings the downtown engine as, now, now that's the third engine that we have there. And he's assisting with water supply also. The proximity of the fire, where it was, whenever they exited the back of the hill station, there was no fire hydrant. So we had to work with getting the hoes, the large five-inch hose up the street. So they bring it, Chris ended up hooking it up and bringing it around from the front of the station, at Station Two, and they married up all the hoses eventually down to the fire scene. Breanna Miller. One of our junior members. And I'm going to tell you, she pats a real good punch. Breanna Miller's with Chris on Engine One. What'd she do? The same thing. She's dragging hoes, working, turning on hydrants, and helping the best that you could. And then on the scene, she's bringing in extra air cylinders, bottles. She just worked very, very hard that night. This is a joy, especially for this guy. It's all a joy, but, um... So James Archer. We have James. James starts as a junior member. He goes through all the training, all the mods, you know, whatever, identify how much training they do. 300 and some hours just to be able to get into the firefighter one. But guess what? This is an example of what it is, from a junior member to an interior firefighter, and his very first fire is the house right down the street. Savannah Talis, another joy. Savannah joined us a girl written around the corner, many years ago. Uh, she developed into one heck of a firefighter, and we're very, very proud of her. And we'll get back to you in a minute, but you and Jim, but, um, this is Savannah Talis. Alex Coleman, lives on the east end of town, runs down, he's on, runs squad company. He's one of the first ones in, he's going inside. Now, now bear in mind, these two gentlemen are taking the fire down on the outside. I get notified for sure, confirmed there's a victim inside. Whenever I see this team come up the street on the squad company, and I say, you know, there is a victim inside, you've got to get him. There's nothing better as an instant commander, is whenever Savannah says, I got it, chief. And that's what she did that night. I got it. Okay, we're going in. So at this point, I detail Dalton Peters off the truck company, instead of going to the roof to do ladder work, he goes, and I say, I need you inside. He was a little confused at first. Chief, I thought you were going up the roof. I need you inside, victim rescue. Okay. He quickly goes inside. So he's part of the inside team. James is part of the inside team. Savannah goes in. We're all going in searching, rescuing. Black smoke. At this time, even from arrival, I had black smoke out of the pump there, down to about this high. That's ignitable smoke. Black smoke is content smoke. We also have a lot of brown re烟 smoke coming out of it, that's structure smoke. So as I'm reading the smoke, that black smoke scares me the most. That's ignitable smoke. And at that time, if it reached the right temperature, that could be a flashover. And we have that pushing out the front door. So I'm concerned that there's, it's the type of hazard environment that they are in. Seconds are counting away. Brian Rusty. Another one that comes, he's two blocks away, he comes down, puts his gear in, now he's inside the building also. Victor, look, the clock's ticking. Was it the map, my right? That time, she's on the pumping store. She comes down the street, she don't set fire, comes down the street, she's there getting ready to inside, find the victim. So at this point, now we have the spirit of the mutual aid companies, because a horrific threat, it was I-181, Leshaw Fire Fire at that time, was covering for New Kingston Fire Company. They're on automatic dispatch, they're on their way. Mike. Mike shows up as a team of four. Unfortunately, the other three aren't here tonight, but they come in and we detail them to interior search and rescue as well. Soon as they pop in, next company to get here, engine 13. So, from here up, this is what's going on. It's very high elevated. I mean, things are, the building is burning. The fire is coming through and it's overtaking the second floor. And it's also, it's racing through the front, uh, front floor. That's her plan to make that interior attack. At that time, the victim's located. Savannah locates the victim, second floor stairway. She's trying to get to the second floor. Finds the victim. Her and Jamie are teamed up as part of the search. She rushes, notifies the rest of them inside, I got a victim. At that time, these, these four of them, across the floor from Leshaw Fire, they get, find Ronnie and get him out, have to bring him through two rooms, unconscious. Get him out onto the front steps. At that time, immediately, Brett was one of them that was bent over, trying to work on, uh, for patient care right away. Justin Everly. There's a story behind this. Another story. Justin's in, on returning, he's working for Silver Spring Ambulance. He's returning from another call. He knows enough about the fire service, he's very well educated. He knows it, he has that, so he just happens to be going by without any particular detail. Yeah, he wouldn't need a dispatch to it, but he's walking half the way, and he can turn the call. Thank God, he ends up, he comes down, whenever they bring Ronnie out, the first thing you do, him in bed, and now you gotta imagine. Savannah also, we get the airbags on him to work for patient care. How valuable it was to have Justin right there, bent over, working on the patient, um, trying to figure out how to bring him back to life. At that time, the crew from 82, our ambulance, we got Tori and, uh, and Zachary. They come, and as well as Chief Jonathan Fisher. So, he's a battalion chief, he's a paramedic on the scene. They end up working the patient. They worked on the patient feverishly. A little story about that, the after action is, Chief Fisher came back to the fire ground hours later. And I've never seen a paramedic that excited in his life, and the glow, the glitter in his eye, he was just so happy, because he said, he's going to live. He assured me that he was going to live. And at that time, we held all the responders together in mutual aid, and we had a nice little ceremony. What a joy that is. The last story in this group is Dr. Lowery. Dr. Richard Lowery is a resident of Bird Mechanicsburg. He lives on Main Street. Dr. Lowery was there to help the fire until the victim was brought out. At that time, Dr. Lowery administered emergency room care, said he would whenever he's working. But what's so interesting about that is, for one, is Jonathan, once, once the victim was laid onto the stretcher and loaded into the ambulance. Dr. Lowery would normally post the doors to the ambulance, and they would run their way to the Holy Spirit Hospital. The change of that was the passion, desire, and just genuine humanity. The change of that was the passion, desire, and just genuine humanity. Dr. Rowley didn't close the doors. He got in, one step, two step. He was riding with that victim to make sure, all the way to the hospital, to do that, that care. So with that, thank you so much. So we talk about seventeen stars. Alex starts round up. I've got one. I will tell you one star which is probably the number one star in this, and it's this. This is not the actual smoke alarm from the fire. That one melted on the second floor and is not operable, but it did its job. This star belongs to the Borough of McInnesburg, to instruction plan on a rental. It show identifies the good when a lot of your time is lost in the credit for saving a life. So at this time, this is your star of the Borough of McInnesburg, as well as our seventeen So at this time, we'll be, um, you come out, you'll be called up to shut your room. You wanna do your stuff.
We're gonna start with a distinguished unit citation. In recognition of individual and team effort, service, and performance which have adhered to the highest standards of firefighting and contribute to improve public safety for the community, hereby confers you distinguished unit citation to Captain Lynn Farm Ross for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. I'm just waiting for the video here. The next distinguished unit citation goes to firefighter James Reese for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. The next distinguished unit citation goes to Sergeant Chief Chris Fisher for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. The next distinguished unit citation goes to firefighter Dana Spender for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. The next distinguished unit citation goes to firefighter Elizabeth Ness for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. Distinguished unit citation to firefighter Dana Meller for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued from a duplex structure fire. Distinguished unit citation to firefighter Diana Meller for a voluntary team work during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one, in which a male victim was rescued The next which we medal bravery in recognition of individual effort, service, and performance which have adhered to the highest standards of firefighting and contribute to improve public safety for the community, hereby confers you Medal of Bravery to firefighter Alex Goldman. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fires at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Medal of bravery to firefighter Darren Westby. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Medal of bravery to captain Jason Frank, rescue bureau fire. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. So, I'm here for this, Chief. Medal of bravery to firefighter community leader Russell Barrett, bureau fire. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Medal of bravery to captain Michael Sh- Shana, rescue bureau fire. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Medal of bravery to firefighter Dalton Peters. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Medal of bravery to Lieutenant Ronald Barlena, rescue bureau fire. Your performance was an involuntary act of distinguished bravery to assist in rescue of a victim during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six West ington Street, Borough, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Next is the life saving medal. In recognition of individual effort, service, and performance which have adhered to the highest standards of firefighting and contribute to improve public safety for the community, hereby confers the life saving medal to battalion chief Jonathan Fisher, countrywide lifeline. Your selfless response to an immediate action that was personally involved in saving the life of another person deserves the highest recognition for the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Life saving medal to Dr. Rich, Dr. Richard Frank Lilly. Your selfless response to an immediate action that was personally involved in saving the life of another person deserves the highest recognition for the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August Life saving medal to EMT Judge Everly, Silver Spring Ambulance. Your selfless response to an immediate action that was personally involved in saving the life of another person deserves the highest recognition for the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. Life saving medal to EMT Zachary Ettrick, lifeline. Your selfless response to an immediate action that was personally involved in saving the life of another person deserves the highest recognition for the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. And EMT Tori Herr, lifeline. Your selfless response to an immediate action that was personally involved in saving the life of another person deserves the highest recognition for the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August Last but not least are the medals of valor, to top recognition that can be achieved. In recognition of individual effort, service, and performance which have adhered to the highest standards of firefighting and contribute to improve public safety for the community, hereby confers you Medal of Valor to firefighter James Archer. Your valiant efforts to reach and rescue a male victim from the second story stairway displayed compassionate concern for human life during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August third, twenty twenty-one. And a medal of honor to firefighter Savannah Tawes. Your valiant efforts to reach and rescue a male victim from the second story stairway displayed compassionate concern for human life during the response to a multiple unit structure fire at four twenty-six Westington Street, Borough of McInnesburg on August
So in closing, um, first off, I can't, I've done a lot. Thank you, Council, for all those who made the present. Becky, do you want to?
Thank you, Chief, and I appreciate it. And thank you, Chief, for fire department and all the other folks that helped us out there, and we appreciate it very much.
You know, we heard about all the firemen efforts and these people, but the person running the show didn't have anything presented to him, Chief Nett.
That's sometimes how it works. Well, these folks did their, did their job because of the leadership that we have in the Borough of McInnesburg. So we're very proud of what you do, Chief, and we thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is Ben Reed, voluntary fire department, fire service update.
Good evening, Council, thank you for having me. Ben Reed, I'm a borough resident. I wear a few hats around here and I can tell you, I'm especially proud, you know, tonight to be here as a member of the board of directors of the Mechanic for Voluntary Fire Department. If I can go off script just a little bit. Chief Nett had similar recognition at our member meeting just a few days after the August third fire. And he did it for the benefit of the non-fire side in the fire department, which I'm one of, I'm not a firefighter. And I can tell you, it was the most powerful meeting I've been associated with. And, you know, I'm a borough resident, I feel like, even though they've accepted me into the apartment, I still feel like an outsider. And I've had the privilege of, as a resident, to view all the work they do and to see it being recognized more publicly is, is a little treat. This is not quite a statement the fire service suggested, I'll try to read it. So more than ten years ago, um, the relationship between the borough and the volunteer fire service, uh, really need a little bit of improvement. And I think we'd all recognize that arguably, this, the most important relationship borough, the Borough Council has with an outside group is with the volunteer, uh, fire service for nonprofit organizations that provide fire, uh, service, uh, on behalf of the borough. So, um, it was a strength maybe that was put together and it culminated, um, in part in a presentation I delivered in two thousand thirteen, which led to, uh, fire tax being implemented to help fund the fire service. And a lot of great things have happened since then. And this has progressed really fast because it took a while, but, uh, Shilton's Fire Company and Washington Fire Company merged finally, they've unified fire service, which we're all proud of. Um, and we've been working on a shared role with the borough and the community to design and hopefully eventually build a new fire station. So, um, we've been working hard on that and there's been presentations to council and we've, we should recognize that, uh, a stronger, longer-term plan is needed to ensure that the fire service is equipped and operational in the borough and to, uh, to build a fire station. And we've done so much behind the scenes in our, and it was really a realization we had recently where this is a collaborative effort and this isn't something that, you know, the finance committee of the fire department should be doing on its own. They should be working closely with, with the borough on, you know, ensuring that the service is provided at an optimal level. So I'm here on behalf of the, the, the fire department tonight to request that, um, perhaps the finance committee of the borough or members of the finance committee with Chief Nett and EMT Wardle, uh, join with members of the fire department to, um, you know, finalize and, and, and a plan to, uh, ensure that the fire service is optimally, um, provided in the borough. And, um, there's, uh, some big pieces involved and, and there's a lot of funding that's needed. And, and, um, we invite Borough Council on this opportunity, similar to what happened more than ten years ago, uh, in creating a steering committee to, to better the service. So that's our request and, um, happy to answer any questions, but, um, we look forward to hearing from you. We look forward to meeting soon because as you know, design of the fire station is well underway and it's not getting cheaper. So time is of the essence and, you know, we appreciate the collaboration with the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Council, any questions at this point? Thank you. Okay, we come to that portion of our meeting where citizens, uh, may make comments and or requests. Um, we let you know upfront that we do not engage in debate. These are comments and requests only. We will take them under advisement and someone from council or staff will be in touch with you, uh, to hopefully answer any questions you have. And we limit those comments to three minutes. So if there are any citizens who wish to speak, now is your time. Please just come to the podium, say your name and address, and, uh, we'll listen. Soon and young now, we will move on to correspondence. Mr. Sizercki?
I, I have the correspondence.
Thank you. Next item is proof of limits of the regular meeting of council on September seventh, twenty twenty-one. Do I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the objection.
Thank you, Mr. Pennon. Is there a check-in?
I'll check in.
Is there any discussion, additions, corrections, or deletions?
There is just one spellier on the map guy. I'm not good at spelling, but RIS is R-I-S, not R-I-S.
Okay.
Oh, the company?
Spell checks.
Yeah, yeah.
Spell checks in there, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. With that correction, um, Mrs. Moore?
Um, I'm here a negative response. I will report the vote in unanimous.
End of minutes were approved. Okay, Borough Board should liaise. Uh, first we have the E A T, Mr. Booker.
Uh, yeah, a couple lines from the last, uh, agenda. There was a plastic flag collection, discussion about a potentially collecting hot, uh, plastic flags to, um, make a bench. The community garden has done well this year, um, and, uh, our electronics recycling event, um, we have, uh, some more information that, you know, um, explorers, things like that.
Uh, it will be held October.
Yes, October thirty.
That's it? Any questions? Sorry, uh, you spelled out, Mr. Booker, with R.
I have a R today, thank you.
What do you do, Mr. Moore?
I'm being scheduled for September twenty-ninth.
I have a number of work.
Thank you. Mr. Wiltar, Mr. Wardle?
Yeah, so we have what we meant last night, and I have some updates as far as some shows and some projects, and where we are right now in terms of the authority. So on Stormwater, personally, the authority approved numbers more to fly than excavating an amount of $278,000, $255,000 for stormwater and a sport root reduction project, which include Kermit Park and Shepherdstown's soil projects. We also approved the board approved for availability to utilize block image and install toilet image at a cost not to exceed $80,000, for hoping that with the project including a new location lift, a group of them, it will bring the unit cost down, and that we can bring that cost down $20,000. Also, treatment plant superintendent T A D, a presentation to the authority on stormwater elements needing to be replaced. This is the first large-scale inlet project in recent, or in recent long-term memory that we have done that the Borough has done anyway, that's been a long time, and is the authority's desire that this will be part of a long-term maintenance plan for stormwater in much. And Gorgosy noted that next week, his firm will be conducting a survey of inlets, making recognition throughout the Borough, and that that will go to the long-term maintenance plan for stormwater in much. Drift 22 budgets were prepared and presented to the authority, namely increasing progress at this time. The stormwater capital budget includes $1 million, $50,000 of professional work on Rod and Keller Streets, as well as West Church Street as well. 2021 is the third full year that the stormwater fees were collected. Prior to last year's authorization, the authority had a fund balance of $929,253. So as you can see, it's been a big year for us on stormwater, and Mr. Van Kirk also showed some photos that he had taken of the recent stormwater events, which everybody was very interested to see how well the stormwater collection projects had worked in Legacy Park. On terms of the silver, we approved professional services contract with HRGM of $65,900 for phase one of the waysmore improvement plan, fine stream project. Now, as you know, reported on the last, the first meeting in, the last meeting that I gave to report in August, it was one month ago, that the superintendent had given us a presentation on things getting stuck in our talks, that this was a necessary improvement. This is part of the planning process to make that improvement. Superintendent, we have reviewed our sanitary sewer budget, and the 2022 capital projects, meaning the social community, that the budget included the purpose of trucks and cell council to take action on possible enterprise, the option which we put out at our last meeting. The other things we did, and what I did at the other meeting was I reviewed the new sport authority goals set in January of 2021 with the authority, and we were on the road making some progress on achieving those goals. Two items that we did, and what we continue to work on, was follows. The building comprehensive infrastructure and freedom of use in cooperation with Borough Council, where that work is ongoing, and in conclusion, more DRT projects include reduction frame projects, which include Kermit Park and Shepherdstown as well. That was the forementioned, we took action on last night. It means the website better communicate with the public and to educate the public. We're working, you know, with Borough Council and the Young Storm Public Outreach Committee, and the stormwater maintenance plan, as I previously mentioned, there's some work in progress on that, which we also, many of them will take action on tonight, but the Borough Council also had some impact on our authority's ability to complete our bridge in terms of the overall system surveys, stormwater, and sanitary, as well as the stormwater maintenance plan with the GNS project, and the ability to track these things, and log the necessity to replace or repair and upgrade. The least water treatment line, string river, as I previously noted, and Adam Moore was in charge of, she's been having collaboration with the End State Master Watershed Program, and there was a rain barrel, rain barrel, rain barrel, western, or workshop, workshop that was held here at the Borough Office. And we also concluded the street evening contract on 12th, 12th March for NS4 credit, which we decided, as you know, to discontinue for next year. With three things left in the year, which is jumping a little bit, that we're this far along already in 2021, we will take into consideration the improvement of the budget, and also review how to handle the stormwater fee. So those are things the authority is writing on. That's the end of the report.
Thank you. Any questions? Here you are, Mayor Warren, planning commission, Mr. Cullen.
The planning commission did not meet in August and is not meeting in September, so I have nothing further.
Thank you. Recreation Board, Mrs. Agerton?
We met on September 14th, discussed the backup of the pool for the year, it was very heavily used. We will be looking to make some repairs or replace the flooding ports as they tough splinters, which being made out of fiberglass, we're exploring options for that. And also just got some park improvements with entrance way to soldiers and sailors as the storm work is starting to disintegrate. So we will be getting, backing up the numbers for the pool and the use of the parks, just so that we can have a recap. And I think they stated there were 54 stays in the lifeguards this year. That was a very high number of stays that our lifeguards did. Till the end of the summer season, they did less than, at the beginning, they were very high. So very grateful for the pool and everything that we did to keep it open, and then we'll explore how to get it up and running again next year. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Warren, Chief Nett, Mr. Booker.
I'll report.
Next would be school board, I attended the school board meeting on this Thursday night. I can't say that it wasn't uneventful. There was a group of parents who were voicing their dismay about having their students having to wear masks. It was a long and tedious end of the meeting. The rest of the meeting went smoothly, and those approvals you can see on their website. But no other information for that report. All right, Mayor, your report?
It's been, excuse me, it's been active a couple weeks. I attended the authority meeting last night, one of the major discussions, especially from Engineer Gorgoski, was the amount of rain that we received on, it seems to be Wednesdays. I think that was Nate's notice, the storm committee set out, what was it, Nate, the last three months? Wednesdays were at 11.38 inches of rain, and all of the days combined were like five inches?
Less than three.
Less than three, yes. So, but we weathered the storms, there was some river flooding and sewer plant that was handled and taken care of, some street flooding here and there. The great thing about, well, let's put it this way, the positive side of that, the rainbow side of all that rain, was the fact that all of the BMPs that council and the authority have implemented over the last couple of years handled things the way that they were supposed to handle them. In Dollar Road, wasn't a mud puddle on Dollar Road, and it was confirmed that they never even had a storm pump kick on. So the changes that Greg and I and the engineers have worked through with the schools and the BMPs we put in have done what they're supposed to do, especially the large containment that's happening at kindergarten academy. That saved a whole lot. As Councilman Moore said, Jim Van Kirk has pictures of what that flows out down at Legacy Park like. I was out there during the afternoon of the last storm, and it was putting it down pretty good, and it was coming out the way it was supposed to, but things were handled. We still have some problem spots. It didn't take care of everything 100%, but they're working the way they're designed to work. And Engineer Gorgoski also made mention that the first one that came through, that signal storm on Wednesday afternoon, that was equivalent to like the 100-year storm that down closed like that. The other one with Ida, that was equivalent to probably somewhere between a 50 and 100-year storm. So our storm system did well, the design could be good, Northside Basin handled it perfectly, it contained it, it slowly released it and let things go. So the stuff that we're doing is working, it's just taking a while to see this stuff work. We didn't get out without any sinkholes, if you well by Kozia Park, by the kindergarten academy on the back entrance there, you will see orange fence in the basin, there are some pretty significant sinkholes there that we have to address. So we're still addressing those, but for the most part, it looks pretty good. The rest of it, everything else is on the metal I provided, and I think the items are below.
Thank you. Yep. Mayor, your report?
Thank you very much. August 22nd, Frank Silver's Tunnel to Towers 911 Walk came to our borough on his way to New York City. People tried American flags and walked with him on Main Street. September 9th, Silverman of the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library has served 25 years as the executive director. A dinner party was held in her honor at a local restaurant by the mayor's office. She well deserved a shout-out and a key to the city, thanks for her dedication. 10th Patriot Day commemoration of the day we support activity was canceled under high alert, moving as a dedicated 911 memorial garden. 11th, Kansburg D U Z, Rinse Drop Health, Chicken Barn, King fundraiser at Memorial Park. Good food, well-tended. 18th, the downtown Kansburg partnership held a center square groundbreaking ceremony. Shovels in the ground, a promise once made, a promise now kept, getting more better together. A ceremonial time capsule is in the plan. 18th, the Kansburg Garden on Bethune's held a P W L R evening vigil at the square. I think I find this very interesting. This is a free picture of a building tower being built, and a man from this area has one of his little Kansburg keys, and one of our little Kansburg keys is in the foundation of Stray Tower in New York City. End of report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Chief of Police, report.
I said one thing, please, 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 please participate in the no-shave months. Again, so you're going to start seeing the guys starting October the 1st, having hair on their faces. And it's all they pay, what they pay, or the ability to do that, and then the money that we get is going to the various charities. And that's all we have.
Thank you.
So listeners, your report? I just a very quick note, the task number three with your package has been revised, you'll have it replaced, the actual resolution, the code for adoption is a redline version, there's some revisions that I'm suggesting that I will.
Thank you. Back chief, report.
Well, I guess we got about 20 minutes of a visual report earlier tonight, so I hope you can accept that as my report. Also, I would like to identify that crown trophies in the line of the ones that did a wonderful job in the limit of our supporting and guiding us in awards in the presentation, and I think the blacks are beautiful. So just wanted to thank them. That's all. Thank you.
EMT Wardle?
Thank you very much, President. You have, I hope you got my written report, and it was sent to Roger a little late. Most of it is related to the flooding from Ida, and most of it has been covered. The total storm damage estimate for the Borough that's been reported to Cumberland County is $15,254.99. Just over $450 of that is for overtime costs for Borough employees, and the other $14,800 is an estimate for damages to a home on Kingswood Drive that separate significant flooding. I have been working with the homeowners of that property to ensure that they have all the information that they need. At this time, the only county included in the disaster declaration in our area, and the disaster declaration was extended today by the legislature, but the only county that's included in this disaster declaration in central Pennsylvania is York County. Damage estimates do continue to be continued, or collected, but it doesn't appear likely that Cumberland County will be included in that. And in addition to the, my report, I also sent some items to Roger and Glenda in regards to the county's climate action plan and some recommendations that they have from local government. I was reading through that at the same time that I was working on my reports, to share that with him. Last but not least, the topic that won't go away in COVID-19, the number of cases from Thursday, the 16th of September, as reported by the Department of Health, was 5,768, the highest since the second week of April. Many local hospitals have had to take steps to cut back on a number of visits, there are significant increases in cases. While there are not as many hospitalized as there have been in earlier surges of COVID-19, I think we in most of the country are seeing significant staffing limitations, both that are acute capabilities and also our long-term capabilities. The overwhelming majority of those who are hospitalized in the ICU and those who have tragically died from COVID-19 since January 1st, 2021, are people who have not yet been vaccinated. There was data released from the Pennsylvania Department of Health last week, and I believe numbers for all of those are over 90%. That's what I have for my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Just a side note, so Mayor, your report's supposed to rain tomorrow, it's Wednesday.
Yep. Over two weeks is the rain, too.
Yeah. There's something weird going on with lining up the stars. All right, are there any additions to the agenda?
I have a revision to the agenda, and that is the third agenda item, should read, discussing an action to adopt Resolution 6, 2021, adopting PHMC's Municipal Records Manual as amended 328, 2019, as revised, as reviewed by Solicitor Cassidy.
Got it. Do I need a motion to make that change?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'll second. Okay, Mrs. Agerton, move, Mr. Booker seconds, any discussion? Mrs. Warren?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the addition is, or the revision is accepted. Okay, now do you need a motion for approval, excuse me, approval of the agenda? So who's? Thank you, Mr. Anthony, is there a second? Second? Mr. Warren, seconds, any discussion? Here you are?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the agenda is approved. Mr. Shazerzky, action items for this evening's meeting, please.
Action items before council on September 21st, 2021. Discussion and action to allocate $25,398 of the ARP funds for the purchase of services for Plonony, the survey along the infrastructure of the Borough of McCannsburg is on attachment one in your package.
Do I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Booker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Does I have some seconds? Is there any discussion?
This is, I think this is an entire first step in
This is, I think this is a, and trying to first step in a more long-term plan for fixing our infrastructure needs in the borough. I think without having knowledge that one needs to be repaired below the surface, it's like, almost like having a, trying to bake a cake and put the icing on before the cake's done. I think this is a great first step, for sure.
We all can agree with that one. All right, so hearing no other further discussion or comments, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action to endorse the letter from Cumberland County opposing the tolling of Interstate 833 Granger Brown's industrial center attachment to.
Salute.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Anthony makes the motion, Mrs. Agathon, seconds. Is there any discussion on that item?
This was, this came out of the Cumberland County Commissioner's Advisory Board that we discussed, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, I think in my report, they only included the municipalities along the river, when Penn Up gave their advising, and Cumberland County felt that sort of Hampton, Silver Springs, as a borough representative that was there, myself, that they should have included a lot more in their advisory for this. And most of the people on the West Shore are against it, particularly some, some of Chief Depp's counterparts, Chief Myers' counterparts also do not like this idea because of what it's going to do to the local roads, especially during traffic, emergencies.
I thought the, I thought the response was very well written and very inclusive. So, is there more other discussion? Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion and action on resolution, to adopt resolution six, 2021, adopting the PHMC's municipal records manual as amended on 328, 2019, and as reviewed by Solicitor Cassidy.
Okay, you all have that copy in front of you of the changes? Salute. Mr. Anthony makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Agathon, seconds? Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Martin?
No. Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. All right, we have come to that point in our meeting where citizens have a second opportunity for comment. Do we have any comments?
Well, this fog outside of my E M C duties, but I wanted to approach the council about it, and to kudos throughout to the municipal authority, to Roger, and to Superintendent Kiwi, on which probably two Wednesdays ago, Superintendent Kiwi was in front of my house. I live at 8 West Schoolside Drive in the Borough Mechanicsburg, looking at both the inlet that is directly below my mailbox, and also the one that is across the street at the corner of Market and Schoolside Drive. I did not, I was gonna call at the time, I did not get a chance to speak to him, but I later emailed him to confirm that there are two inlets that will be replaced in the next year, and he confirmed that they will. If you have not seen them, both of them are crumbling, and I was asked to ask me almost every day if a giant sinkhole opens up at that area, we will be responsible for it. And so I am very pleased that Superintendent is moving forward on those projects with the assistance of the authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, is there any other business?
No. No.
No, sir.
No?
From the E M C hat back on briefly, tonight is an example of why it is so special to live in the Borough Mechanicsburg. Since I have become the E M C, it's been my goal to increase the communication and collaboration between borough staff and the police and the fire department. And whether it's Hurricane Ida, the remnants of Hurricane Ida, whether it's house fires or any other issue, I believe that everybody works very well together, and it truly is a good place to live. And one other thing, still this bothered the unemployed, they're now in the Borough Mechanicsburg, if you haven't seen them, and we all need to fight that battle because they are harmful and vicious species. Thank you.
I've never seen them before until this year. I'm seeing them everywhere.
Yeah.
Chief, nothing additional, sir. Chief?
I just wanted to say that, I'm so sure of being this, I'm also a resident of the borough, and I was very impressed to see the number of volunteers, volunteers from our fire department that respond to all types of things. In a, in a year, in years that you can't get people that are paid for some jobs, it's nice to know that people still do, if I was here, to come play fires when they're, they do a lot more than that, but they're fond of the fire, so I was impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to make a similar comment in, in light of the recent reminder of 911 and watching those videos on TV and hearing some of the, the words from some of the surviving fire and police and rescue people that were involved in, in that horrible day. There's something unique and inherent in these folks that you saw here tonight. Paid or unpaid, they have this extra sense of value of life and, and property that most of us don't seem to have. I, I don't know how, a way to describe it. It's amazing to me personally, so thankful for everything that they have done in this case, just quite willing to shoot a victim come in tonight. That was an amazing, amazing presentation, so we thank you again, and keep up the good work. We're, we're proud of you. All right, that being said, we are going to adjourn to an executive session.